Good evening. My name is Vince Noblet, President of the Town Council. Today is August fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. It is seven P. M. I want to call this meeting to order. First off, please stand for a pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First off, I'm going to start off with introduction of the Town Council. At my far right, our Town Manager, Grant Klaunheinz.
Good evening.
To my exactly right is our councilperson, David Lindsay.
Good evening.
Far left is the Town Attorney, Bob Plutter.
Evening.
Next to Bob is our Town Clerk, Chris, Philip Faust.
Good evening.
And to my executive left is our Vice President of the Council, Gary Pettigo.
Hello.
Next on the agenda, we have minutes approval of the minutes of July twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting. These minutes have been distributed to the council. If there's no changes or corrections, we'll approve them as submitted. Hearing none, the minutes are approved. Next on the agenda is a special event request for Jazz Fest presented by the Speedway Chamber of Commerce. And you're not Rhonda. Thank you for coming.
Good evening. I'm Lauren Dar. I'm here on behalf of the Board of the Speedway Chamber of Commerce requesting approval for the Jazz Fest, which would take place Saturday, September ninth, two thousand and twenty-three, from six-thirty to eight-thirty P. M. With setup starting on that Saturday at two P. M., located at the SRC-owned Main Street Parking Lot next to Barbecue and Bourbon. Anticipated attendances generally around one hundred and fifty to two hundred people. My understanding is that you were provided with detailed information of the event, and so I don't think I need to go through that line item by line item for you. And so I'm here to seek approval, as outlined. And my understanding is that this is essentially held and done in the same manner with which it was done last year, and last year it was very much a success for the town.
No, it's always a great event.
Yeah, the only comment I would add, and Cheryl has in her notes here, a couple of these items will have to be approved by the Redevelopment Commission that meets on the twenty-eighth.
Correct.
Of this month. So the items such as the stage being in the parking lot by Barbecue and Bourbon owned by the SRC, I think that's the one item. So that will be on their agenda. They'll approve that that night. So you're approving the event, and they'll approve the use of their facility.
I've been looking.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the special event request for the Jazz Fest by the Chamber of Commerce this evening.
Second.
Yeah, you've got a motion and a second. Any questions tonight?
Looking forward to great event.
No, absolutely. It's a very.
I'm sorry. What was your name again?
My name is Lauren.
Lauren.
Dar, D-A-R-R.
Thank you, Lauren.
That's perfect. It's always a great, good event. Well, last year is, I mean, it's nice, easygoing and good social event. There was a lot of people there.
Yeah, it's a wonderful event. Unfortunately, I typically miss it.
Lights up on top, and you guys put a lot of work into that, so.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Well, there's no other questions or comments. I want to go ahead and call for a vote. All those in favor of the event, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries three-zero.
Thank you very much.
Forward to it. Thank you. Next up is a special event request for Oktoberfest presented by the USAC Racing. Lauren?
I'm actually not Lauren. My name is Nicole Parks. Hi, guys. So I'm requesting approval for the Oktoberfest. We are going to be changing up some things with that this year. We're going to be showing that the cars, we're going to be doing like a car parade. It's going to be a kickoff for the eight-hour with the SRO cars over at IMS. It's going to be a big fan engagement opportunity, some music, DJs. So we're not going to have a beer garden this year, no food trucks or a stage like what we did a couple of years ago. So we're just looking, seeking approval for that.
So are you requiring any street closures then?
From fourteenth to sixteenth Street.
Okay.
Starting at four P. M.
Is there a timeline on that? The timeline for the closure?
So no parking after four?
Yes, after four.
Probably put the signs up like we normally do.
Morning.
And cut it off early afternoon just to get, if there's people that need to move cars or.
Right.
Typically, we start that process about one-thirty or two, but it doesn't have to be closed until four.
Okay.
And then USAC is going to take care of alerting all the businesses prior, just to make sure that they can accommodate.
Mr. President, I, what other discussion? David, do you have a comment?
How many cars are you?
That has not been discussed. I think all of them. All of, I don't know how many entries they have yet. I will let you know as soon as I know that.
Okay. And these are the IMSA cars, right?
They're SRO, so.
Okay, all right, all right.
The, they're street cars, Lamborghinis, Mercedes.
Gotcha.
All of those. We'll be in contact with the security, the police escort, all that type. I don't.
Great. Has Cheryl spoken to the businesses on Main Street about this?
I am not sure that she's spoken to the businesses. I know that we did request that USAC do that.
Yes, I will be doing that.
So I'll have to ask her that, David. I know she asked USAC to do that and then report back.
I'm sure they're fine with it, but I mean, we're closing a two-block area and we've not talked to them yet about it. I, that kind of raises some concerns for me.
Okay.
Okay.
I mean, I'm going to be in favor of this. I think in the future, this is on the town.
Yeah.
Not on you. I think someone from the town needs to reach out to those, to the businesses that are affected, whatever block we're talking about, before someone comes before us to.
So here's what I might recommend. Obviously, we're six, seven weeks away. Why don't we just table this item to the next council meeting, which is in two weeks? I think we can get that all approved, wrap that up, and.
That's right.
Make sure Cheryl has communicated clearly.
Yeah, no, no, no.
I think it's a great event. It's wonderful, but I think we owe it to the business.
One hundred percent.
That's a big block area that some major businesses.
Yes.
That are going to be affected by this, and I want to speak to them, and that's on, that's on us.
Yeah.
For not going to them first.
Yeah.
How many people do you plan on attending?
Typically, probably, I remember the first year we did this, when we had live music, there was at least three hundred, four hundred people.
Right.
Since there's not a live band, that might be a factor, but I mean, we're going to have DJ, we have some fan engagements.
Right.
We're working, we're trying to get a marching band, hopefully, but I know Lauren was trying to get in contact with that, but it's homecoming week.
Yeah.
So things like that, that's probably not going to happen.
Yeah, I thought it was, they drove the vehicles off, out, didn't they?
Yes.
Went around, around about, I think.
Yes.
Back down.
She was, I talked to her on the phone this morning. She wants it more like what you guys did this past week with the haulers. She said that, she sent a message to Cheryl to kind of compare notes about that, whatever you guys did, because she had.
Just bring them up to a breast.
Yeah.
And all the way down to how many cars they have.
Yeah.
You know, from that up.
Because it looked very, very nice.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah.
Would be great to have that.
We'll take a concurrency, and I agree. I think we need to make some more phone calls and wait.
I mean, we got time. We can, we can do that.
Okay.
All right. Well, thank you very much for giving.
I'm not sure we need her to come back if we.
Okay.
To two weeks. I think you've presented what needs to be presented.
You are welcome to come back to.
Oh, sure. I'd love to.
They are riveting.
I'm sure, David, that, and council, I think that Cheryl could have responded to those questions tonight, but she's.
Yes.
She's under the weather, so.
Yeah.
We'll get, we'll get.
Safety has had the plan. Okay.
All right. Well, we'll just take on that for that.
Thank you.
Much appreciate it.
Excuse me.
Okay, we'll move on to the fifth line item. That's Indy Art and Music Fest Golf Kart Request. Tammy?
Hello. I'm here with Lori Duran. She's part of West Indy Winds. They are the ones that have partnered with the Parks Department to do the West Indy Art and Music Festival. This will be our third year. It has been a well-received event. Last year, we anticipated we had over a thousand people at the event. So we are requesting approval to have a golf cart help shuttle band members from the parking lot there next to the library for just the West Indy Winds Band. We may have a contingency plan where we won't need to use that parking lot at all, but I won't know that until Wednesday at the Parks Board Meeting. So this is kind of our Plan B in the event that we have rain or something like that to where we're not able to, to park cars in the park the way we would possibly like to do. But the plan is, we've already got approval from the school to use that parking lot, and it would just be for the West Indy Winds Band because their band is going to be last, and when their members start coming, there won't be anywhere for them to park. And a lot of the band members are elderly, and they have their instruments, and so the golf cart will be used to help transport them from the parking lot to the gazebo area. For the event itself, it starts at noon with our art and craft vendors, and then the first band comes on at one o'clock. We've got seven different concert and jazz bands, and a new band will play every hour on the hour with a fifteen-minute transition between bands.
Is that correct?
That's correct. And so we look for this to be another successful event, and we would just seek approval for the use of the golf cart for this event only for the West Indy Winds Band Members.
What is the date again on that term?
It's, it's actually this Saturday, August nineteenth.
And the times again, I'm sorry.
Noon to eight is the event times. Bands start at one. We will start setting up at nine o'clock at Meadowwood Park. And if it wasn't that we were going to be, you know, crossing away from the park, you know, I wasn't sure that we even needed to be here, but we felt what, it was best to come to you and ask for approval.
Sure.
Ask, you know, get it whether we need it or not, rather than need it and not have it, so.
No, I think that, I mean, the only, my concern is just the crossing of Twenty-Fifth Street.
Right.
And making sure that the drivers are aware that, hey, we're going to, there's not a crosswalk there right now.
Right, and.
And we just have to develop one.
Right. And Street Department said they would, you know, get barricades over, and we could get signage up and stuff like that. We hope we don't have to use it at all, but this, we just wanted to cover our bases.
Have you thought about the schools and the lot behind the school?
I did talk to the school.
They said?
No.
Okay.
They're letting us use the, the one next to the library, and we could also, if we have such a large crowd and need more parking, people can park at the high school and walk over. But yeah, they didn't want cars parked over there. Yeah.
Well, no, there's a paved lot north of it.
Oh, I'm unaware of that.
I'm aware. They will not let you park in the grass.
Okay.
But there's a lot right behind, it's actually the playground area that has basketball goals that could, could be parked on.
Okay. Well, I can visit that as, definitely as an alternative.
That's a lot more closer than, because I have the same concerns that Vince has about crossing Twenty-Fifth and Fifth Street.
Mm-hmm.
And it's a great event. The band's wonderful. I may know a few of the members.
You might.
Yes. So yeah, I mean, it's a great event, but again, I have some safety concerns about.
Sure.
Twenty-Fifth Street. So if that lot north of, it's a lot shorter, a lot safer, I think, too, so.
Yeah.
You really have a motion?
Yep. I make a motion. We approve the West Indy Art and Music Fest Golf Cart Request for August nineteenth.
Second.
Hey, I got a motion and a second. Any further discussion in relationship to golf cart usage? No discussion, I'll just go ahead and call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. Three-zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Can I ask one question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Is it possible for us to get a permit to post on the golf cart, just so there's no question why a golf cart may be on the streets?
I can take care of it.
Tammy can make it up.
There we go. Tammy can take it.
Operating Department.
Yeah, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up is item number six, Resolution two thousand and twenty-three dash oh four. Resolution declaring surplus property and authorizing its disposal grant.
Yeah, so pretty simple resolution. There are ten vehicles from the Police Department including on, included on this, nine Dodge Chargers ranging from two thousand and fourteen through two thousand and eighteen. The VIN numbers are listed under Exhibit A, and then there's a Ford Escape from two thousand and eleven that's also included. This just allows us to declare those as property, surplus property. They'll send them to auction, I believe, is what we're looking to do. We also have the option of trading those in if, if we don't get prices that we want, but that's something the Police Department will handle. So we recommend approval of the resolution.
President, I move that we adopt Resolution number twenty, or two oh two-three dash oh four, Resolution declaring surplus property and authorizing its disposal, as presented.
Second.
Yeah, you got a motion and a second. Any more discussion concerning that?
One point of clarification.
Sure.
The Ford Escape is actually from the Sewer Department.
Oh, sorry.
Okay. Any other discussion?
A question that really is not relevant to this, but in my mind, it kind of is. Chief, where we stand on vehicles and surplus vehicles and how's the fleet sitting right now, I guess is what I want to know.
Well, the five vehicles that were approved back in March for us to purchase, to round out our fleet before we start over here in a couple more years to buy the police patrol vehicles, they, those went into the system to be ordered in March, and then about a month and a half later, we were notified by the dealership in Ford that those had been kicked back out, and they weren't going to make those in two thousand and twenty-three. And we're really in unprecedented times right now. We don't know when they're going to take orders for the new cars for two thousand and twenty-four, and we, talking to the dealership, and this is the same problem other police departments are having right now. We just don't know in terms of when we're going to be able to order those five vehicles that were approved for the two thousand and twenty-four budget, so. And we've kept some vehicles back just anticipating that in case we were to have issues with some of our fleet. So we do have some, some surplus vehicles that we could go back to if we have wrecked vehicles or something that we can rely on if, if something like that happens, so.
So disposal of these is not going to impact?
No, no. We've anticipated and kept some of those vehicles back, and when we get those vehicles that hopefully sometime they open the system to order vehicles, then we can purge those vehicles when, when we do get new vehicles that come in, so.
So what's the oldest model in the fleet right now?
That's a good question. Probably the ones that we're about to replace, which are two thousand and eighteen's. So, and those would be the five that we have, the administrative cars at this point, administrative detective vehicles. The rest of the fleet has been replaced at this point, so.
And so of the current fleet, none of them are two thousand and twenty-three models? You're waiting on two thousand and twenty-four?
Well, they probably were, because we ordered those, and they normally make those toward the end of the year, the two thousand and twenty-three model. We do have a couple of two thousand and twenty-three models, but the model that we were trying to get to replace the vehicles were two thousand and twenty-three's, and they kicked those out of the system, and so they weren't going to make them. And now we're trying to order two thousand and twenty-four's when they actually, we'll open that up for, for orders, so.
I know COVID has made this really, really messy.
It has, yes, yes.
I mean, we were behind the eight ball a few years ago.
Yes.
Because everything aged all at one time.
Yes.
I just want to make sure that we are every year replacing a portion of the fleet.
Yes, and that's what we anticipate, but right now, we just, we're in unprecedented times with ordering vehicles. We've never had this problem before in terms of vehicles, so.
Okay. Hey, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? Again, I'll go ahead and call for a vote on Resolution two thousand and twenty-three dash oh four, Resolution declaring surplus property and authorizing its disposal. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, it's item seven, approval of combined sewer overflow compliance plan for the agreed order with Indiana Department of Environmental Management. Grant?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. So as you know, on June the sixteenth, the Town Council adopted an agreed order that we agreed to enter into. The requirement, the initial requirement of that order stated that we needed to, to put together a modified long-term control plan. That long-term control plan has been worked on over the past six weeks, six or seven weeks, and we have identified several different opportunities, as well as put together a timeline for the construction of those projects. There are three projects that have been identified as possible solutions. We're going to do some preliminary engineering, collect information, identify a project that we can put together, work on, then designing that, getting it permitted, then financed, bid, closed, and constructed within the next five years. Those three alternatives, and we've got Bridget here with Wesler, Brad Sloan also, our wastewater superintendent is here. The three alternatives include, the first two are two larger CSO overflow tanks, a million gallon and a, and a two million gallon. Those cost have been estimated at nine to eleven million dollars. I think those costs are rightly so high at this point, because we don't know all the details. The third alternative is a wet weather treatment or disc filter that will be installed in line with our current process. It'll have to go through UV lighting, and then we'll be cleaned with these cloth filters, right? Clean to a level that's acceptable to be released back into the creek. So those three alternatives, and that alternative is about a nine-point-six million dollar project. So what we're doing with this, this agreed order letter this evening is just identifying a timeline of five years. We're hoping to get these things accomplished by June of two thousand and twenty-eight in five years, a little, little under five years. And these are the three options that Bridget and staff have discussed. There's a couple other things I think we want to do, like looking at inflow and infiltration, particularly from the Chapel Hill Lift Station and those neighborhoods. We've looked at Farley in the past, but doing some of that eye and eye to try and understand, are we getting a hundred thousand gallons a day or half a million gallons a day that could be taken off the system and might help with this? I think we're also going to look at potentially the seventy-two inch interceptor, maybe getting the neighborhoods to the north of the wastewater plant off of that, allowing more inline storage. That could be an option. I think that will be a more cost-effective option, but we'll vet that out as well. So what we're asking this evening is for this letter to be approved and timeline. Vince will have to sign that as the Town Council President. We'll then send that on to IDIM. It's due tomorrow, and then we'll hear from them, comments or any updates, and then we'll have to start working on putting these things together. Bridget and Brad, if you guys have anything to add, or if you want to correct anything that I misspoke on, go ahead and come on up.
Oh, you're going to get called out.
No corrections, just some additional information. So Grant, I already mentioned that this was, sorry, Brad.
No, you're fine.
You know, this is the reason that the agreed order came about, just as a refresher for you and for information for the public who wasn't here maybe in June, is that, you know, you put this long-term control plan first together in two thousand and seven. It was modified in two thousand and ten, and at the time, you know, you're predicting what your system's going to look like in the future, how much reduction in the flows you're going to see with all the different projects you outline in that. And so across the state, they look at, okay, what kind of flows are you releasing from the plant? Are you meeting the requirements the state has set out? And they've just identified a few times, a couple times a year, I'd say, where, you know, there's still an event occurring at the treatment plant when the state is hoping not to see one. And so the whole goal of this agreed order and the compliance plan is just to reduce the number of combined sewer overflows that occur at your one overflow site, which is at the plant, and to make sure that we can improve the quality of the water there as best as possible. And so the compliance plan, all as Grant already said, is just, you're outlining the plan. You're showing the state that you have an idea on not necessarily what the project's going to look like, but how you're going to go about tackling, addressing the overflow events that you see. And so the plan doesn't really lock you into anything. It just helps the state understand the steps that you want to take. And so the first step on there, Grant mentioned, is that preliminary engineering to report, and that's when we'd really look at all the options that, you know, we've already all started talking about and dive into it and figure out, you know, how much storage would you need, or what type of treatment would be appropriate, and that'll really help us figure out a better idea on the cost and the, the scope of work needed for them.
So Bridget and Brad, we have one to two sewer overflows due to wet weather events a year, correct? It's not like we have twenty.
No.
One or two, right, Brad?
So far this year, we've had one. Last year, I think we had four.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that one was in March?
Yes.
Correct?
Correct.
Was that due to rainfall?
Heavy rainfall, yeah, over two inches of rain.
Yeah.
The four the year before, same thing?
Same thing, yeah.
And they're wanting to eliminate those completely, correct?
Much as possible.
Much as possible.
So there's a, when you put your long-term control plan together, you have a certain size rain event that you have to meet. So if it's basically, if it rains less than that, you're not allowed to have an overflow. If it rains more than that, it's considered like a permitted overflow event. And so some of the overflows you have had are slightly below the rain event that you have to work around.
With our separation, that's helped.
Tremendously.
Absolutely.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
So prior to our separation, how many would we have a year prior to that? You remember?
I was told at one time it could have been anywhere from thirty to forty.
Definitely double digits compared to the handful that occur now.
And we're now ninety-five percent.
Correct.
Separated.
Yes.
Right? I think we've still got some parts of town that need some attention, but.
Yes, that is correct.
Before the, any of the long-term control plan work was put into effect, when they did the very first study, if nothing else had been done, you would have had to be able to accept about two hundred and fifty million gallons of water at the treatment plant, which is.
A lot.
A lot of train. And now it's a matter of, you know, maybe ten million gallons of, at a flow rate. So the, it just tremendously decreased with all the separation work that was done, which is what's made it possible to even try to capture and store the water that does come. was made it possible to even try to capture and store the water that does come to the plant.
Right, over the last couple of days, have we been close with the rain we've had?
Not even close. And that's due to the ground is just so dry, it's been so dry, it soaks it right up. Springtime, it's saturated, it has nowhere to go.
The hardest part is that a lot of facilities struggle with this, is just especially in the springtime when it rains back to back. Because the amount of rainfall you're allowed to have an event has, is looked at from the state's perspective as a single day. So if it rains one and a half inches one day, and then you have one and a half inches the next day, and you have an overflow event because they've had three inches total, it still doesn't qualify as the, you have to have two inches in a single day for it to be allowable. And so that's really when the system struggles, is just those back-to-back rain events. And when the ground is already either frozen or saturated because it's just seen a lot of rain.
Are you measuring the amount of diversion?
Yes, the volume.
That goes in directly?
Yes, and that Brad reports that every time there's an event.
Okay. Do you have a flow meter on it or?
Yes, there's a flow meter out there that, it's right after the CSO tank that measures that.
Is any of this driven by the undersized main on the west end?
I'd say no. The only thing is that, so not that area, but the 72-inch interceptor, as Grant alluded to, was intended to be served as storage. You know, you can fit a lot of water in 72-inch interceptors. So I believe there's supposed to be about a million gallons worth of storage in that line. But because of how the homes are connected and some of the businesses along there, the line's not able to fill up all the way, use all the volume that's there without causing backups. So the plant has made a number of changes over the years to prevent those backups from happening and impacting the people that live around there, but it's just reduced the capacity that you have. So you really don't have as much storage as was originally intended when the long-term control plan was put together. And so that's, you know, one of the things we're looking at, just how could we maybe utilize that whole capacity in the interceptor? How do you just add more storage, like tankage that you already have at the site and expand onto that?
Any, this may be far reaching, any of the businesses, I mean, the town's expanded some businesses in town. Has that affected the flow to where we have more coming in? To where it could be is where we have the one? Or is our system capable of handling what we've added to the town? Does that make sense?
It makes sense, yeah. I don't, I don't see those businesses having much of an impact on this at all.
So dry weather, anything that's, you know, sanitary, industrial, commercial flow, your plant can handle plenty of that. It's only when you start to get wet weather and you get the rain, that inflow that ends up into your combined portions of your system that overwhelms.
And the plans that Grant described, we believe that's, I hope not believe, but that's going to fix the problem?
Right, I think there's a couple of different approaches you could take on how you want to solve it, but there's definitely a solution out there that'll help you meet both the requirements they have and then the five-year timeline that the state desires for it to be accomplished and.
And I want to ask a couple more of those questions, but it just occurred to me that we've not made a motion here. Mr. President, I think we need to make a motion to approve the combined sewer overflow compliance plan for the agreed upon order with IDIM as presented by Grant, Bridget, and Brad.
I'll second. I got a motion in a second.
Now, a couple more questions. Bridget, so these three alternatives, especially this number three with the wet weather treatment filtering system.
Sure.
I mean, is this, well, specifically that one, but I guess it would, my question relates to all three. Would these be implemented at the wastewater treatment plant or someplace offsite?
No, it would definitely be located at the treatment plant.
All three of them, whichever one?
Whichever one of the three were to be picked or any combination that you were to go with. So that's the advantage of going with the filters that Grant was describing, is that their footprint is a lot smaller than another, you know, you have a million gallon storage tank onsite already. One of the options was a second million gallon storage tank that would go to the south of where that existing tank is. But yes, there, have to work it out so that you could fit it at the existing facility. And there's already an existing screen there that's rated for a high enough capacity that that infrastructure would all be reused as well. That would not have to get adjusted.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions?
And I would just add one last thing. Grant mentioned this about the cost, but because we haven't even done the PR yet, you know, the sizing of some of these tanks and how much it would cost, it's very just preliminary level to give a general order of magnitude. But our goal as we look at the PR and dive into the options and details is obviously to find the most cost-effective approach possible. And that might be a combination of trying to utilize the capacity in the 72-inch infrastructure, which allows us to build a smaller tank at the plant or anything along those lines. So we'll all be working together to figure out what will fit best at the plant and be most cost-effective. And then we'll be able to refine those estimates that we provided for you guys when we have a better idea.
And as we discussed, you know, that they've put 20% contingency in there, that's a lot because we just don't exactly know. You would never go into a construction with 20%. It's going to be more like eight to 10%. So that's obviously an inflated number. We've included the non-construction, engineering permitting, right-of-way acquisition if needed, easements, just to make sure and include those. I'm not sure either of those numbers would be eclipsed, but we threw them in there trying to make it as high as possible, just so we better understand, okay, this is what we might have to spend, but we're, we think it's going to come in less than that.
Okay.
Another question. Are we the only government sanitation public group that's being sent these letters by the state for this? Are there others that are having these same?
Many others.
There are others, yeah. IDIM told me we are not the only one.
This is a common problem that a lot of people are seeing. You know, it kind of went in phases for a while. Everyone was working on their long-term control plan, writing it. Then everyone was building their infrastructure that was associated with it or separating their sewers, all of which you guys didn't help a ton. And now it's this kind of third phase where there's a lot of facilities just are still have, you've reduced so much of what you had before, but you're just slightly over the amount that the state is allowing, which is resulting in, you know, compliance letters and agreed orders such as the one.
Would you agree with the statement that this is something with water and sanitation plants, that it's constantly making improvements to make the system better and to meet state requirements?
I would agree with that.
Seems like my 12 years here, that's all we've been doing is receiving letters and answering letters and, I mean, when I first got on the council too long ago, it seemed like we had a CSO report every night we had a council meeting. And now you're coming and saying we have one for the year. That is a.
It's a big difference.
Fantastic job.
Yes.
But now, big brothers come in and told us we have to fix that.
Keep raising the bar then, right?
You do, right? That's the thing with, whether it be at the treatment plant, in the collection system, the bar just keeps getting raised. New legislation is passed or requirements keep getting stricter and just across the state requires people to just keep making those improvements.
And I say all that, and I agree, we shouldn't have any.
Right.
But when you have, I mean, what's, Brad, what's our biggest rainfall we've had here in town that you can remember in the last couple of years?
About 2.8 inches.
Yeah, which is a lot of rain for us.
That's a lot of rain. That's a lot of rain.
Yeah.
Three weeks ago, I think we probably got an inch or an inch and a half in a couple of hours.
Last weekend, we had two inches.
Yeah, I mean, it's just insane.
Yeah.
And as we talked, I feel like weather's getting more severe. That's not by happenstance. I think our environment has been affected and we're now having to deal with that. So just part of, part of the cycle.
And I will say, I knew the answer, well, we weren't the only ones, but I want the public to realize.
It's a good point to make, yep.
That, I mean, we have, the council, our staff has been working on this for years.
Yes.
Just when we think we're doing great and the state sends us a letter and we're back at it again.
Yeah.
And all the existing infrastructures are working really well, so especially if we were to add the filters or another tank, all of that can be utilized still. So none of them necessarily would go away, it would just be adding on to the capacity.
Not to keep talking, but I will.
Okay.
That was for two here at the table. The sewer lining we did, Grant, how long ago was that?
Three or four years ago.
That's helped.
I think everything in its aggregate has helped incrementally, right?
To me, I think that's really helped the situation.
Yeah. And I know that we're looking at doing maybe Chapel Hill, some of that lining and removal of sump pumps that have been connected in, perimeter drains that are connected in, couple, several hundred homes, might all be pumping 1,000 gallons to us a day, and that's a lot. And if we can get that off the system, then that's better for us.
Yep.
And it needs to be done. It's something that we're going to look at as part of this.
And that's the nice thing about the fact that you don't have to start design for a couple of years, the way the compliance plan is written. So anything you do between now and then to identify how that flow is getting in, if you can take even just a little bit of that off your system, it's a smaller tank or smaller filter system that you would need to build out when you do get to the point of construction.
With you saying that, I don't think we need to wait a couple of years. This is something I think we need to start on soon.
Right, yeah.
I know we have, now we're going to set ourselves to a certain date, but I think the sooner we get this taken care of, because once we get that taken care of, it's probably going to be something else.
Yeah, something else. Once we get approval from them, I think we'll initiate action over the next 30 to 60 days.
And that would be one last point to make is just, so the next step is you submit the compliance plan as written, and there's a couple of different responses the state can have. They can either approve it exactly how it is, deny the whole thing, or occasionally they'll come back and say, hey, you say you're going to take a year and a half to do this. We think you need to take a year. Instead, there can be some discussion back and forth and then potentially a revision or not. Hopefully they'll accept it the way that it's written, because I believe we all feel it's a pretty effective timeline to get everything accomplished. But that would be the next step for all of this.
Okay.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate all the information.
Appreciate it.
Okay, no other discussion? Go ahead and call for a vote on the approval of the combined sewer overflow compliance plan for the green order with the Indiana Department of Environmental Management. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries 3-0. Next is approval of claims and utility adjustments. Phillip?
Thank you. I am asking for the approval of two adjustments as well as the claims for the period of July 22nd to August 11th. Claims total 2,353,454.8. Welcome your questions, but we'll ask for your approval.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the claims and utility adjustments as presented by our clerk treasurer.
I'll second.
Yeah, I got a motion in a second. We're going to open up, any questions, concerns concerning any items?
I have one question. Phillip, the air source, heating and air, the preventative maintenance on page one, is that for the town hall?
It is.
Okay.
Okay, are there any other questions? Hearing none, I'll go ahead and call for a vote. All those in favor of approval of the claims and utility adjustments as submitted by our town clerk treasurer, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion carries 3-0.
If I can correct my question, SMC, not town hall, correct?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Didn't want to think we're still paying for the other place, so.
Okay, next up is our reports from the department supervisors. We'll start off with our police chief, Chief Upchurch. Yeah, are you recovered?
We are working on it. I think Chief Fishburne and I would both agree that it was a very long weekend. So, and that's what we're going to start off with. We did have a successful race weekend. They were long days. I think Saturday was about a 14-hour day for us. And I just want to commend all the officers for the extra effort they put in. And we brought Lieutenant Dine into, he's now doing our planning for the races. We're moving that down to a lieutenant level so we can pass that on to the next generation. So we have the officers here that are aware for the planning. And that planning, our race plan is a couple 100 pages long when it's all done, combined with all the other police agencies and public safety agencies. So it's quite a task that has to be undertaken for each one of those events. So just want to commend them for that. And we had, I don't believe, I don't believe we had any arrests that were track-related for the weekend. So it was a good weekend for us in that respect. So moving to the next item, this Friday, one of our new officers that we hired back in November, he is about to complete his 16-week training academy at Indiana Law Enforcement Academy, and he will be graduating on Friday night. So we look forward to having him back and getting him back to work. And he's done an outstanding job at the police academy. So, and last but not least, I'd like to recognize Sherri Wortley. She's our records coordinator, and Sherri will be celebrating her 30th anniversary here with the police department in November. And Sherri was named our employee of the quarter for the second quarter of the year in July. And Sherri does an outstanding job, and there's a lot of things that we always keep an eye on at the police department, but Sherri's not one of those people we have to keep an eye on. Sherri does an outstanding job and we just, a lot of things that she does with property and evidence and collects fines and the ordinance violations bureau, and she just does an outstanding job. And we just wanted to make sure that everyone knows that she was, and acknowledge that she does that job. So she was the, as I said before, the employee of the quarter for second quarter of the year.
That's fantastic.
Congrats.
And that's all I have, so, unless you have any questions.
Yeah, absolutely. No, I think police department, absolutely, all the departments did a great job over the weekend, starting on Thursday.
Yes.
Street department getting out, you guys controlling the traffic, you know, you guys were right on, you know, you didn't run over any of the band, that was fantastic.
We did not.
You know?
It's always a plus.
Yeah, it's always, absolutely. No, seriously, you guys, it was like clockwork and I know there's some people that, it's the first time Cheryl was involved with the hauler event, so.
We brought the hauler parade back this year.
Yeah, absolutely. That's great.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
Chief.
Let's follow up by Chief Fishburne.
Yeah, I want to congratulate Sherri. You don't have to watch her because she watches all of you. So, kind of like Christie for me. Another race weekend behind us, and I won't belabor that point. Wanted to give you our run totals for the month of July. Had 352 incidents, 58% of those were EMS, and 42% were fire-related. And to give you guys an idea on that, an idea of what those percentages encompass, you know, an EMS run might be a person in distress, it might be just a sick person, it might be a cardiac arrest, and all of those are categorized differently, but 58% of our runs were EMS. And then the fire runs might be a PI, a car accident is considered a fire run, might be food on the stove, it might just be smoke in the building from an outlet. As far as working incidents, we had about 13 where we were on the scene for quite some time. So I just kind of want to give you that background, and I appreciate Vince always kind of asking and making that a part of our report now. Wanted to let you know that we did receive the grant from Marathon. We're hanging on to that check so that we can do a photo op with Marathon because Clerk Treasurer hasn't gotten it yet. But it's not made out to me, it's made out to the fire department, so. And we'll utilize that to offset some of the things we had budgeted for. We wrote the grant to do water supply for major places like Allison, Heritage, Crystal Clean, Marathon, Motor Speedway. So we'll replace some of our five-inch hose, and then we won't have to buy that out of the, you know, general operating budget, and it'll help us offset some of that. We kind of plan on getting a few grants each year, but you're not guaranteed those. And I really thank Assistant Chief Milhorne for spearheading that effort, and Marathon's a great corporate partner. Next week, we will have 15 individuals sitting for our promotional process. It's been a long time since we had, we've not had a promotional process since I was appointed chief. But we have a battalion chief that'll be leaving in September, Battalion Chief Chaney. We have another lieutenant, Lieutenant Gemadi will be leaving next spring, and so that'll kind of cause a domino effect, so we'll be having all those guys sit for that test next week. Other than that, I really, I don't have anything unless you guys have questions.
You got a question for Bob? No, great job. No, great job. I want to thank you guys for the work that you did over the track and in the town. It's handling both places at the same time. I appreciate it, Bob.
If I can comment real quick, Chief, the band, I got several that were very, very appreciative of what you did for them.
Oh, yeah, that's going to be an annual event.
That's great.
Kids love getting, so I'll come back though. That's a fun one.
It was.
So, we were contacted by some of the band parents and the director of the high school band back when they were doing two-a-days and they were practicing, and they said, hey, could you guys come over on one of the hot days this week and douse the kids and just drench them without their instruments? And they loved it. So, we're going to make that an annual event. Other high schools had done it, so we weren't, you know, the original, but we got a lot of great feedback. I got, I got a lot of great emails, and we certainly want to do things like that. You know, we do the spaghetti dinner for the football players, so having fun with the band and doing stuff like that is just one of the things that we enjoy doing, so thank you for mentioning that.
Things like that really pay off, especially the band, you know, to have them lead the trailers down Main Street, I think is always a great thing.
We do. We love it.
They got a lot of applause on the way down, so that's good. Okay, Tammy?
This week, we've got the market in Meadowwood again on Thursday. It's each Thursday from 5:00 to 7:00, and the last market will be Thursday, August 31st. We've got two regular concerts left for the summer and then one kind of additional music. So, this week is She Loves Horses, a Tom Petty tribute band. That's Thursday at Meadowwood Park from 7:00 to 9:00. Next week, on the 24th, is Bar Bender, and that was a rescheduled from a rainout. They were originally scheduled as our first concert. So, again, that's the 24th. And then on August 31st, Twilight Nights will be playing, but they will be playing earlier. They're actually going to be playing during the market, so they will start about 5:30. So, we will have that additional concert on August 31st, but the time for that is 5:30 to 7:00. And as I talked earlier, West Indy Art Music Festival is this coming Saturday, noon to 8:00. Our vendors open up at noon. The first band starts at 1:00. We will have food trucks and a beer and wine garden, so come out and spend the day with us. It's an all-day event, and it's a lot of fun. Looking ahead, in September 28th, we've got Community Day scheduled. That's Thursday, September 28th. That will be at Leonard Park. This will be the third year we've had that. It's kind of our version of National Night Out with the police and the fire department. We'll also have the Touch a Truck event again with the town vehicles, so the kids can get up close and personal. We'll have community groups out. And then this year, the library is paying for a foam truck, F-O-A-M. It'll be a fun, like spraying foam out for the kids to run and play in. So, let's pray and hope for nice weather, and the kids can come out and have, have fun in the foam at Community Day.
And the foam is like bubbles?
Yeah, bubbles. Yeah, real thick bubbles. It's safe for the grass, so we're going to set an area up for that. And there's a business that actually does this for parties and events and stuff. So, the library is actually doing that and providing that for us. So, we want to thank the library for doing that. And with that, that's all I've got.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
Questions for Kim?
And Rob Wetnite had an emergency this afternoon with town business, so he's wet and muddy, so Brad is going to present this evening and switch with Rob. You got to make sure he switches with you.
Yeah, we're a little out of sync right now with everybody, so we'll have, we'll get it straight, though. Well, we'll start with the street department. Business as usual. They've been busy, they were busy working the brickyard with barricades, setting them up and taking them down. At the water department, business as usual. They treated 72 million gallons of water for the month of July. Pressure washing the outside of the ground plant. Lead and copper sample results for 2023 have been sent to the consumer and IDIM. All those samples were in compliance. At the wastewater treatment plant, business as usual. The plant treated 105 million gallons in July. Repairs to the U V system are complete and working properly. The new Werewolf was installed on the number-two clarifier and is working good. And we want to congratulate Don Mitchell for passing his IDIM Class IV exam.
Wow.
That's a laugh.
Good work. That's great.
How many Class IVs now?
We have four there now.
Sweet.
And one Class III.
Awesome.
And he's going for his Class IV as well.
You've done great, Brad.
Thank you. Thank you. We'll get more.
Keep it going.
Yep, we'll get more.
Any other questions for Grant? No, good job.
Thank you.
Brad, you must be a good teacher.
He cracks the whip, I think. He cracks the whip.
So, next up, our town manager.
My report will be brief. The town council will hear the 2024 budget presentations next week, Tuesday, August 22nd, and Wednesday, August 23rd, from 5:30 to 7:30 P. M. Staff is still finalizing the budget binders. We hope to have them in your boxes here at S M C by the end of the day Friday. We'll have a PowerPoint that will be presented. Invitations have been extended to the library board. Darcy will be here, the transportation committee and the schools, so we'll have all of that ready for you to go next week. Looking forward to that. That's all I have for you this evening.
No, absolutely. Good. Go ahead and do a report from council. Councilman David Lindsay.
Just a question for Grant or for whoever can answer, but the Legion, we were speaking with them about improvements for them and some roads, kind of any, anything?
There has been no update on those projects. At the time, last, last year, just before the 500, it was agreed that I M S would act as the point on that, and those discussions have just kind of not gone anywhere at this point. They might be having some discussions behind the scenes, but we have not had any further updates on that.
Okay. And then my next thing is just to thank the town employees for the great job they did this. I know it's not the crowd we have in May, but it's a big, big undertaking. They've done a great, great job from police to fire to street, water, sewer. I mean, they, they all have to work together for it, so the employees should be acknowledged for the great work that they've done greatly. Appreciate it, and that's all I have this evening.
Thank you. Next up, councilor, vice president.
And I want to echo David's last comments relating to the town, so guys are just awesome up and down the line. Two things. First of all, from the public's knowledge, you heard me kind of giggle here just briefly a little while ago when David started talking. It's kind of an inside joke. I haven't seen David in face-to-face for over a month, and I like picking on him, so I was teasing him earlier tonight, but I got utmost respect for him, so he's red-faced, but I do have great respect for him. That doesn't mean I'm not going to keep teasing him, because I'm going to. Just want you to know. Beyond that, I know I sound like a broken record. I have been a blood, well, now a platelet donor for quite a few years, and I donate platelets at least twice a month. And I am in contact with the Versity Blood Center, formerly Indiana Blood Center, or Blood Center of Indiana, and the Red Cross, and there is still a very high need for whole blood, platelets, red cell, I mean, anything that anybody can physically donate, I encourage you to do so. We've got burn patients, cancer patients, kids, I mean, you know, blood's something you can't, you can't produce in a laboratory. So, if you're physically capable of donating, I encourage you to do so. And with that, that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, Gary. Okay, last up is a report from town council president. Just a few things I'd like to cover, again echoing the fantastic job that all of the employees of Town of Speedway did. Every year, we have a lot of different visitors in our town, and I think the comments that I'm hearing from a lot of the visitors that are out there and they appreciate the small-town feeling that Speedway puts out to a lot of those visitors from all over the country, especially when you have like NASCAR events and IndyCar events that bring them in, into our town and visit our restaurants and from that standpoint, and so we do have an effect on that. I think the other thing is, I'd like to mention that this comprehensive plan that the town will be using for the next 20 years, I think it brings a couple poignant things to light in relationship to a lot of the questions and concerns that the public had written in relationship to town code violations. I think it's, as property owners, it's always sad that we have to, you know, basically remind people to cut the grass and take care of their property, take pride in their property. But I think if you are having a problem and you feel that you're not getting a response, I think you need to call Grant and make sure that he is able to have our code enforcement people along with the chief, make sure that those are attended to, and at least inform the offenders that, hey, it's not acceptable in the Town of Speedway to let things go unattended in relationship to that. The other concern that I noticed that was in the comprehensive plan was speeding. And I think all of us want to be able to ride our bikes and not worry about our kids coming home at night in relationship to people speeding through town in relationship to, but I think Chief has done a great job of applying cameras and also to speed indicators to just, to remind people that they're breaking the speed limit. And if that fails, then a ticket might be awarded in relationship to, just to give a fresh reminder. And I think that's the kind of town that we want to live in and continue to invest in, and that's all I got for tonight. Thank you very much, I appreciate it. And it is 8 o'clock. Thank you.